For this council and for the staff that you've provided in the city, we ask you to lead, guide, and direct, give them divine wisdom in the dealing with the citizens and their affairs. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the true color for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, before we get started, I would like to ask you guys to keep Ms. Anita Clark in your prayers with the loss of her brother this week, so just keep her in your prayers as we move forward. This is just the day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Need a motion to approve November 5th, 2024 work session meeting?
Move to approve.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Six with one, three and six districts of Stein.
All right. Need approval for the November 5th regular council meeting minutes?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right. All right. Mayor's message, Mr. Reed.
Good evening, Mr. President, council, citizens of Montgomery. I would like to take the opportunity to begin this week's message by highlighting National Apprenticeship Week. We proudly celebrate the critical role apprenticeship plays in strengthening our workforce and building pathways to success for so many in our region. Apprenticeships are more than just training programs, they are transformative opportunities that equip workers with hands-on experience, industry-specific skills, and the foundation of rewarding careers. Our Youth Build Montgomery program is a great opportunity for youth in our community to gain on-the-job experience and workplace training. The program, as so many others, help demonstrate Montgomery's commitment to fostering partnerships between educators, employers, and community organizations to expand apprenticeship opportunities. These programs empower individuals to learn while they earn, bridging the gap between education and employment. To apprentice, mentors, and employers who drive the success, thank you. Your dedication is shaping the future of our workforce and ensuring a brighter, more prosperous future for our city. Together, let's continue to invest in opportunities that work for everyone. I would like to, at this time, read a part of a proclamation that has been penned by the mayor, Stephen Reed. National Apprentice Week is celebrating its 10th anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role registered apprenticeships provide in creating opportunities by allowing apprentice to earn while they learn and prepare a pathway to good, quality jobs and well-paying careers in the city of Montgomery and across the nation. The city of Montgomery recognizes that registered apprenticeship, a proven and industry-driven training model, is a key strategy to improving job quality and creation across a good-paying, family-sustaining job for all, starting with youth and young adults while addressing some of our nation's pressing workforce challenges such as rebuilding our country's infrastructure, addressing critical supply chain demands, supporting a clean energy workforce, modernization of cybersecurity responses, and responding to a care economy initiative. Now, therefore, I, Stephen L. Reed, mayor of the city of Montgomery, do hereby proclaim November 17th through November 23rd, 2024 as National Apprenticeship Week. We also would like people to know about various events that we have coming up over the next few weeks. Get your Black Friday started with our fourth annual Gobble Wobble 5K Run and Walk. Sponsored by Move Montgomery, the Run Walk allows participants to exercise at their own pace while staying healthy and having fun with family and friends. Registration for this event is completely free, and Run T-shirts will be provided to the first 400 registrants to pick up their race registration. Runners are encouraged to make donations to Heart of Alabama Food Bank. These donations have helped support their mission to distribute nutritious foods to those experiencing hunger and food insecurity throughout the region. Runners have the opportunity to pick up their packets for the Gobble Wobble 5K on Wednesday afternoon, November 27th, from 3:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. at the EJI Museum at 400 North Court Street. Please stop by to pick up your Race Bib shirt prior to the race and avoid the long lines on Friday morning as it promises to be a large gathering for this fun event. For more information, please visit www.movemgm.com. As a reminder, the city of Montgomery offices will be closed on Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, November 29th, for the Thanksgiving holiday. Residents are encouraged to check the city's website, www.montgomeryal.gov, and the city's social media accounts for updated information on holiday office closures, altered trash pickup schedules, and more. We would also like to bring a few Christmas season events to your attention. Our residents are prepared for the holiday season. In conjunction with the Jewish Federation of Alabama, there will also be a Hanukkah celebration and a memorial lighting on Monday, December 30th, at City Hall at 5:30 p.m. Residents are also invited to participate in the annual Capital City Christmas Parade set for Friday, December 13th, at 6:30 along Dexter Avenue. There will be live coverage of the parade on WSFA. City Christmas tree parade sign-up forms. The deadline for the organizations to register for the Christmas parade is November 30th, so do not delay and register your float today. We hope to see you all celebrate the holiday seasons at our various celebrations. Another item that's coming up on the calendar is the anniversary of the bus boycott. Residents are invited to attend a celebration on Monday, December 2nd, at 7:00 p.m. at Hope Street Bachelor Church in observance of the 69th anniversary of the Montgomery Bus Boycott. The bus boycott sparked by Rosa Parks' courageous refusal to give up her bus seat was a pivotal moment in the fight for civil rights and equality. A year-long protest shattered barriers of racial injustice and showcased the power of collective action and nonviolent resistance, inspiring generations to confront inequality. As we honor this legacy, let us recommit to the ongoing pursuit of justice and equality, ensuring that the sacrifices made by those who fought for freedom continue to inspire meaningful change. To close tonight's message, I would like to call special attention to a recent announcement from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, otherwise known as GFOA. Last week, the city of Montgomery received the organization's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2023. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. The award-winning report was judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program. Betty Bevel, the city's chief financial officer, also earned an award of Financial Reporting Achievement as part of the recognition. The AFRA is presented to the department or individual designated as instrumental in the government union achieving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The GFOA established the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare annual comprehensive financial reports that demonstrate the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. Please join me in applauding our entire city of Montgomery Financial Department for its diligence in preparing these reports to earn such recognition. This concludes the mayor's message. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Bevel. All right. Any special committees to report? All right. Madam Clark, I am one.
Mr. President, I am one. Mail veto of ordinance number 51-2024, approval of contracts.
All right. Need a motion?
Motion to override the veto.
Have a motion to override the veto? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Five.
All opposeds have the same rate.
Four. The mayoral veto is overwritten in the ordinance stands. Item two, reconsideration of resolution number 123-2024, application for a towing company doing business as D&amp;D Towing and Recovery, 23 West Patton Avenue.
Honors of West Patton Avenue, please come forward. Ms. Riley?
Mr. President, I've already kind of talked to him, and we got an understanding. He's not going to hold cars over in that area. He's just going to be picking up cars and taking it to the location where they need to go. So I'm good with it, as long as he stays in compliance with what he's instructed us that he will be doing.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution, President.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item three, ordinance regulating parking of commercial vehicles on residential property, option one. Do you want to carry it over or withdraw?
Mr. What is that?
Number three.
Ms. Riley?
Mr. Ward, I'm going to talk on that briefly so he can explain to what we're doing.
Mr. President?
We have wording which appears to meet Counselor Riley's initial request. We will start moving that through the review and approval process firstly to Jeremy and to Legal, and then to the Planning Commission, and then if it moves through that, we can bring it back to you. So I believe you can either delay it or remove it from future agendas until we bring it back.
Okay. Mr. Moore, let me ask quick. What are you proposing that's different than the ordinance that we already have?
It's placing a restriction on the parking of certain commercial vehicles in residential neighborhoods. These specific vehicles are school buses, semi-trucks and trailers, and tow trucks, and this amendment would basically prohibit parking them in residential neighborhoods on driveways on residential property.
Okay, just include school buses, you say?
It's exempting them. Yes, it's exempting them.
Okay. All right. Item number...
Are you going to withdraw item three? Because you're going to be introducing a whole new ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're withdrawing three?
Yes, ma'am.
And four?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so three and four has been withdrawn. All right, Ms. Effort, you still want to speak on three and four? I have a couple of people that want to speak to the council on items three and four. Angela Expert? Phyllis Harvey Hall and Collette Jenkins?
Good evening. My name is Angela Expert. I'm the South Johnson Neighborhood Association president and also South Montgomery Neighborhood Alliance president. I want the council to understand that in the municipal code, there's a section 27-543 that states, "The city traffic engineer is hereby authorized to erect and maintain signs and other traffic control devices given notification of prohibits or restricts of operation of commercial vehicles on the street and roadways. For designated truck routes, they are only allowed to come in and deliver or pick up items in those commercial vehicles." Our community had these signs put up by the city engineers. They came out and put brand-new signs that had the big truck with the circle and the line that goes through. So that should be enforced. There's no reason why the city cannot enforce that because the city engineers have that right to put it up, and that is a controlled area. It is a residential area. In addition, there's also another provision in the municipal code, 27-542, that states, "Commercial vehicles are prohibited from certain street usage in our city." So the city council can talk and rewrite as much as possible, but at the end of the day, if it is not enforced, it will not work. We can write rules, we can write ordinances, but until we enforce what we have on the books, nothing will change. Our streets have eroded so bad that we've got patches, just like a hopscotch, patches all through our streets throughout our neighborhoods, and we just had another water pipe that burst in our street. Yes, we had those gravel put down for several weeks, and then they come back and pave it, but that's unacceptable. This is the capital city. This is a city of dreams. We got to get it right. Enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Hall?
Greetings to the city council of Montgomery, Alabama, and to all of the representatives. I am Phyllis Harvey Hall, and I, as well as the community members that you have heard speak, we've come here since September 17th of this year, which has been approximately two months of continuation with the same ordinance and all of its configurations. And we are asking tonight that the council do more than just continue this, but there is the will to make a vote to actually, although we've heard it withdrawn now, but we need all of these iterations of this to be voted against. Now, living in Montgomery, we have land use zones. We have areas for commercial land use and for residential. This ordinance that's proposed to allow commercial vehicles in residential areas would bring with it several unintended consequences. One being the safety. When we think of residential, we think of our children, our grandchildren, we think of our furry pets in the streets, we think of safe areas. When you are bringing in these large trucks into our areas, then we are actually causing for some hazardous conditions because they block the visibility of other drivers, and it's also going to cause our children to be adversely affected by the noise that's in this area. We're asking today that you actually stop the continuous and change, and even though you've heard it spoken several times by Ms. Expert, we already have ordinances. We're looking at an enforcement area issue. So let's enforce what we have on the books, and let's stop. We don't have the resources apparently to enforce what we do have. So there's no need to put in more bureaucracy when we do not have the funding nor the resources to meet them. So we're asking tonight that you consider the safety of our neighborhoods, the noise pollution of these trucks can bring, and that you consider the aesthetic concerns for older neighborhoods without HOA, that you vote to stop putting forth new ordinances when we have one on the book that is sufficient. We're asking tonight that you find a political will to support those who are coming here week after week for this. And before I say another word, do we have anyone coming to speak for this ordinance or any such ordinance?
You asking me?
I'm asking the council or anyone in this audience. Yes, is there someone here in support of it?
Yes. Ms. Riley?
Yes. But we're asking for other citizens. There have been several of us coming to speak against.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So we are asking that you make the motion to stop this particular ordinance and support the will of the people of Montgomery and those of us who are concerned about our communities.
Well, actually, three and four has been withdrawn, so...
Excuse me, sir?
It's been withdrawn, so there's no going. It's not even up before the council.
Thank you for that. So what did you say? It's been withdrawn, but is there something coming forth again?
Uh, it might be. They're looking at a new ordinance, maybe something to strengthen the one that we have, but I agree with you. It's about enforcement. It's not about the ordinance. So they're working on something through zoning. Yes, let me finish that. No question. All right, go ahead.
We have lots of stuff.
What we're working on to help better this ordinance is what we're trying to do. So we're looking at multiple ways with enforcement and all to help with this ordinance. So that's what we're trying to do to better us as residential people with this ordinance.
I think that for those of us who call in, we need the agents to come out and actually do the citation, and then we need MPD to actually write the tickets. That's what's needed. It's an enforcement and accountability. I don't think that by writing something new, we're going to get any different results. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. Jenkins?
That's right. I'm Ms. Jenkins, and when I was here before, I didn't understand about this microphone, and I was told that I needed to speak clearly into the microphone. So is it right now?
It's right.
All right. I'm here for the community in Montgomery about these tractor-trailer cats, and I've been here before, and I want to thank Ms. Riley for bringing it back and forth to us. I won't be long. Somebody suggested that three-minute sign on the board. So is that meant for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Or what is meant for you?
It's meant for the person that's speaking.
Okay, so don't interrupt now. Give me my three minutes.
I got two twenty now.
And if I hold up, now what I don't use, can I refer someone else to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Well, you got two thirteen now.
Well, that's all right. It won't take long.
I don't think we use all of our inside. Well, when I come, I feel like I'm an elementary school teacher because I keep bringing these handouts. I don't know what you mean.
Ms. Phyllis, will you hand them out so she can continue to talk?
Yes. I'm just a citizen. I'm not a originator, but I love the community, and I like where I live. I left here fifty years ago. When I came back, I had basically had a home, but what I saw, I didn't like. And that was like these people going into businesses, and they should have examined that before they went into business to see what has to be done. Not bringing that truck home because I walk the neighborhood, and I see what's going on, and they hide them sometimes behind the private cars. My property value is going down. I want to sell my house and move into a nice high-rise. So I won't be long, but I wish you all would consider that for the seniors who have invested in their property. The streets are being torn up. And again, Ms. Riley, thank you for bringing it before the council. And I tell people, I'm retired. I don't have nothing else to do. You'll see me again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do, Ms. Jenkins.
Can we yield her minute to someone else?
No, ma'am. Her time is up. Thank you. You have to sign up. I'm just being fair. Just have to sign up and speak. All right, item four. Ms. Jenkins, drawn. Item five?
I have five ordinance amendments, section 309 of the Code of Ordinances, hours of sale of alcoholic beverages.
Mr. Mitch?
Mr. President, I have a substitute on this particular ordinance. I want to carry it over. I want to give the council an opportunity to look at it. I want us to, if we can, carry it over so they can see what we're actually doing. We are not...
You want, Mr. Leelock, you just need to read it until the minute so we can carry it over for two weeks?
You need to make a motion to adopt and then a motion to substitute, and at that point, you can carry over the substitute.
Go ahead, Mr. Mitch. Need a motion to adopt, then substitute. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Now you want to carry over to the next meeting.
I need to do a motion of substitute?
No, we just did it.
Oh, we did. I want to carry it over.
Yes, sir. So the substitute is carried over, which will be the same section, but hours of operation rather than hours of sale.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Item six.
Sorry, Mr. President, Mr. Mitchell, just one thing. For the state, a lot of your traditional lounges, the state allowance is 2:00 a.m. So when councils, if you're talking to any of the businesses in your districts, check and see how many of them are actually open until that time because what we have in front of us cuts off at 1:00 a.m., and if people are depending on doing business until 2:00 a.m., as been guided by the state, we might want to consider that over the next two weeks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Hold on, Ms. Let her out. I think she left. Okay. All right. Item six, next item.
Item six, ordinance rezoning five parcels located on the south side of Edna Break Lewis Drive, 600 feet west of Spratt Drive, from an Ag 1 district to an M 1 district. No recommendations on this item.
Okay. All right. We have a public here, and I have a lot of people that signed up on this item. So you guys are owners of the property?
Correct.
What's your name for the record?
Chase Stewart, NCC Properties.
Here's the second gentleman.
Chance Perry.
Chance Perry.
Okay, you signed up also. Okay. We did have a public here, but...
Yes, sir. We've had the public here.
I did have some people sign up, so I won't let a lot of them speak. All right. Okay, guys. Stephanie Lowry, you guys are on item number six. You will come to the microphone. Right here in the middle. It's not going to bite you, so move a little faster.
Is one of them Stephanie here? Lowry?
All right. So on item six, I have, if I call your name, just state your name for the record. I guess it's Candy Wayne? Gandy? It's a Gandy? I mean, y'all wrote it. Hey, from now on, let's give them the print on this. Okay, Rico Ferris? Okay, step up to the mic. Lakeisha Ferris? All right. The rest of you guys, I guess, there's some name I can't. It's Gandy Warren Wayne? What'd they say? Ms. Leelock, we just need to get, please, print on here because, you know, I got about ten doctor signatures up here, and I can't read. All right. So we want to be the spokesman. We got, you guys all here opposing or you guys for? I just need a spokesman. We're going to give you, you know, ten minutes aside so you guys can come up. This is the public here. Just tell me what's your opposition? You in favor or you opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So are you guys opposed? Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead, sir. Your name for the record?
Good evening. I'm Bruce Durham. I'm here to oppose the rezoning of the nine-and-a-half acres of land on Edna Break Lucas Drive to M 1. I appeared before this council two weeks ago and gave you reasons as to why you should deny the rezoning. I'm here again today with more information on why you should deny this rezoning. I'm a little bit more confrontational today because of what occurred at the last meeting. It's obvious to many people in my area that Mr. Stewart and his company are involved in land speculation. Mr. Stewart and his company are not part of Montgomery. He lives in Pike Road, and the business he owns is based in Pike Road. He bought these nine-and-a-half acres just outside the city limit with the intent of selling them for a quick profit. Specifically, I discovered he bought the land when Old Man Cruz, the previous owner, passed away, and his family sold it to Mr. Stewart for $130,000. Almost immediately, Mr. Stewart put the land up for sale for $390,000. When he couldn't get a quick sale, he discovered the way to make money was to have the property rezoned from Ag 1 to M 1 and sell it to a warehouse distributor with no ties to our area. This council has shown that it is business-friendly, and it has supported rezoning when there is a larger community benefit. It has not been in the habit of supporting land speculation through rezoning against the wishes of area residents, speculation that adds little or no value to the community. In my view, this is a matter of short-term thinking, manipulation, and behind-the-scenes influence without seriously looking for creative alternatives. All of you are familiar with the Envision Montgomery 2040 Strategic Plan. This is clearly one of those times the council can demonstrate its commitment to the spirit and intent of the 2040 plan. If Mrs. If Mrs. Stewart's company really wanted to contribute to the area's economic and natural interest, he would use those nine and a half acres consistent with that plan. Now, personally, as a retired business professor, I looked at how this might be a win-win. I generated a business plan for a small riding stable on this property. It includes financial projections, break-even analysis, and marketing strategy. With little additional investment, Mr. Stewart's company could launch a riding stable business on this property that would generate a six-figure annual income and be profitable by the second year. Having a six-figure revenue stream based on business which positively serves the interests of the community is something that a lot of residents, business owners, and community members can buy into. The city council has a choice. Promote land speculation for get, get rich, click screen, or support the greater community's interest. I urge you to reject the rezoning of this property to M One.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Oh, that name was Sandy Ware, I apologize. If you want to speak, yes.
Yeah, my name is Sandy Ware, I reside on Edna Break Lucas Drive. And, yeah, we all came down, uh, to oppose this thing that Mr. Stewart is trying to do. We have a lot of kids on the street that plays all time of day and night. And by him bringing in this business, whatever he's trying to bring in, I think that would, uh, that wouldn't be a good idea. Uh, there's no lights on the street. Um, the water is bad down on the street. So, I think it'd be a bad idea.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Ware. Anyone else? All good? Mr. Sankey?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President and members of the city council. I'm Isaiah Sankey, I'm the, uh, representative on the county commission for this particular area. And I'm here, uh, because they invited me here, uh, and they have no representation on the city council. Uh, and so I'm, uh, standing, uh, and, uh, and on behalf of the citizens, uh, as their county commissioner. I had an opportunity to meet with the petitioners and I certainly understand their side. Uh, I'm all for business development, uh, I'm all for taking property and turning it into productive use. Uh, but I'm also concerned that the citizens, uh, have bought homes there, uh, they live there, they've established, uh, their lifestyles there. And we should not, uh, allow, uh, just any speculators to come in and try to change the value of the properties, uh, that, as they currently exist. And so, not opposed to, uh, the petitioners necessarily, but I am concerned, uh, that this body has been asked to make a decision in terms of rezoning, uh, the property from agriculture, residential, uh, to, uh, light industry. That concerns me, and so because of that, uh, I stand with the, the property owners, uh, tonight to say that we probably should not rezone the property because they, uh, wish it to remain, uh, the same. And so, uh, I, I'm here for that reason. And again, as I said, they have no representation on the city council, and so I'm here to represent them as the county commission for that district.
Thank you, Mr. Sankey. Any question from the council member? Anyone else want to speak? Alright, thank you.
Mr. President, I got a question for the gentleman at Horse Ranch. Sir, would you be interested in giving them the money that they paid for it and cost to clean it to build the horse ranch? The stables?
I would be willing to maybe invest some money for stables.
Okay, alright, but they've got money tied up in it currently. Would you be willing to, to give them the money to, they get out of that plus their cost?
Mr. Grant, I think that's an unfair question.
No, no.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, I mean, I'm asking.
No.
I mean, I mean, he, let me just say one more, he has invested in a property there. And basically what I just heard is those, they're invited, these, these people, I'm not against business, I'm pro-business. But they're coming into a neighborhood where the people that's, has invested in that property is saying that's not what they want.
Say, say right across the street, there's a truck and terminal right across the street.
But we missed that on the rezoning.
There's no trucking.
We missed that part on the rezoning. This council did probably didn't rezone it. I'm talking about what we have before us right now. And then one thing I want to say is when we look at what we're talking about with our planning commission, that's what they're supposed to be screening this for. And we keep, too often, we get these things saying no recommendation. No recommendation.
I agree fully.
Even, even we need to do, disband the planning commission because everything comes without, to this council without a recommendation. Now, we're here in the public hearing, and I'm hearing what the planning commission should have heard. And I, and I'm pro, I'm pro-business, I understand, but I'm looking at the people that's saying they have invested in their properties there. And, and I think that, you know, you have the right to ask any question, to ask a property owner, would you be in, willing to invest in, in a stable? That's not what we ask anybody else, are you willing to invest when we do another rezoning? I mean, it's already zone A and, and they're asking for a change. It don't fit into our, anybody want to plan and want to speak on this, but it don't fit into our 2040 plan. So I, I mean, I'm listening to what the petition about. They don't vote for us, it's going to be the same thing that comes up when we talk about these farms down here in the Opel area. It's the same thing, we have to listen to the citizens and what they're coming for us to say. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's proper for the council, you know, we done heard what we need to say, so I'm, I'm open for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Four.
All opposeds have the same right.
Five.
Alright.
The motion to adopt fails.
Alright, motion fails, good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, ordinance rezoning one lot located at thirty-seven oh one Atlanta Highway from an O Two district to a B Two Q district. This item has been withdrawn.
Alright.
Item eight, ordinance rezoning two lots located at seventeen fifty-one Yarborough Street from an R sixty-five D district to a B Two Q district.
Alright, Kenya Carroll? How you pronounce that?
Kenya Carroll.
Okay, Carroll, alright. Alright?
Uh, Mr. President, I spoke to the, uh, business owners. I'm excited about what they're doing and I just want to make sure we do everything proper and in order. So, they have, um, something scheduled with our economic development department and we'll follow up in thirty days and, uh, then vote in favor. But I just want them to get everything in order.
Alright, so what's the motion?
Thirty days, uh, and we'll revisit.
Okay, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But is this is carried over for thirty?
For thirty days, yes ma'am.
Item nine, ordinance repealing ordinance number four, which is twenty twenty-four gun.
Alright, Mr. Pruitt, on a public communication on item nine, I have Mr. Tony Garrett, Rhonda Davis, Chief Grables. Angela Expert. You can't sign off with the two items on agenda, Ms. Expert.
Yes, you can.
That means you signed up for seven. Alright, Ms. Pruitt?
No, we going to let them go ahead and speak?
Yeah, we let them.
Alright.
Alright, we want to go first, ladies first?
Ladies first.
Good evening, council, Ms. Expert with South Johnson and South Montgomery Neighborhood Alliance, both presidents for both organizations. I want to talk to you all about the war zone we had on Saturday night in our community. We sent, uh, some correspondence to the chief. We had rapid gunfire from eight o'clock until after midnight Saturday night. We had to take cover. One of the neighbors had called and said, my baby here is nine years old.
Ms. Expert.
Yes. I'm going to stick to this, I want, I want to tell y'all this.
Speak to this on, on, on the audience, whether you're opposing or you're like.
I'm going to talk, I'm, I'm for it, I'm a hundred percent for it. And I want y'all to understand, we tired, we tired of taking cover. Now, when they wrote that Alabama law, they said, this is what's in the law. It said they have to be nineteen years or older, or eighteen years old if they are an honorable discharge veteran or a veteran law enforcement person that is eighteen years old can carry a weapon. So how you going to validate that? You got to have some ID. Same thing if you go into a store to buy cigarettes and alcohol. You going to have to validate it, you can't sell it to them, same concept. So why are we playing around with the citizens' lives in this city? Don't be scared, step up to the plate. There's a loophole in there and it's telling you exactly what it is. They have to be nineteen years old or older, or eighteen years old, a, a veteran that has been honorably discharged or a law enforcement officer. Work through the process. Stand up for what's right for the citizens. We're scared here in this city. Enough is enough. When we heard that gunfire ring out on Saturday night, from Saturday at eight PM until after midnight and then hit again on Sunday night? It's ridiculous. We haven't had that problem in a long time, but this particular weekend, they just, I guess they said, well, we going to do South Johnson. We had shootings on all four corners of our neighborhood. We called nine-one-one, I'm quite sure you got plenty of records of our neighborhood calling. But when a child come to you and say, will the bullets come through the brick walls? I'm scared. How you going to comfort that child when they think bullets will come through a brick wall? You are our elected officials, you're in those seats to protect the citizens of this city. This is a city of dreams, not a city of nightmares. We got to work together as a unified unit. Being in the inclusion, all nine districts, let's pull it together. Because at the end of the day, when the bullet leaves the chamber, it has no address. You don't know where it's going to go. And with that rapid fire, you know those Glock switches. Because they were firing off like it was, they was having a wang dang dude of a time. We had them shooting in the back, then they'll start shooting up in the front, the side, and on the other side, north, south, east, and west of our community. We are scared, so please do something about it. Y'all work together on this.
Thank you, Ms. Expert. Alright, Tony, Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to be talking about the firearm and ID requirements and why they are so necessary for communities. They help officers protect the community from devastating effects of gun violence. It's a strong and necessary response to guns and gun-related incidents. It shows the intent of our city government to do something meaningful in response to the indiscriminate and I believe too frequent gunfire that takes place in some of our neighborhoods. The city council and the mayor took action with the ordinance to help protect our vulnerable neighborhoods because current state gun laws are not giving police the tools that they need to better control and prevent the, the growing incidences of gun violence. Current permitless carry laws limit the actions that police can take in regards to taking weapons from individuals that should not have them. ID requirements allow for accountability that helps us take weapons from people who are trying to conceal their identity at the same time that they are concealing their firearm. Requirements allow for us to make sure that the people who are legally eligible are in fact the ones who are carrying the weapons while they are in public. It allows for the identification of the same individuals to make sure that we are not dealing with a felon in possession of a firearm or dealing with somebody who's under some type of court order preventing them from having that firearm. Requirements allow us to have deterrence against things related to firearm-related crimes because they allow for us to remove those weapons from the streets hopefully before they are used in something worse. Firearms laws help give us tools that we need to deal with the guns that we find on the street too often. In fact, the old concealed carry law that used to be in effect was incredibly effective because how many times did we probably prevent a murder when we pulled over a car and found somebody who, let's say, did not have their permit, but they had the AK in the car concealed? Well, we were allowed to take that gun and of course hold that person accountable. How many weapons did we take off the streets under those circumstances and how many crimes did we prevent? My people are answering too many calls of gunshots going off indiscriminately. This is a message that says we are doing something about it, if for no other reason, that is more than enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
About a year ago, I was in Sam's. Guy came up to me and said, uh, I remember you, you a police officer.
You got his name right, Ms. Blalock? Tony Garrett, yeah.
Tony Garrett, I'm sorry. I'm Tony Garrett, crime stopper, I apologize.
I know how Mr. Garrett is.
While conversating with the guy, he said, you pulled me over and you arrested me. I said, was that a good thing or a bad thing? Was I rude? He said, nope. He said, I had a gun on me and, uh, you charged me with unauthorized use. I was going to kill my brother. We had been in an argument and if you hadn't taken me to jail that day, I would be probably in prison now because I would have killed my brother. Uh, I can tell you about the six hundred tips that we get, uh, per year that we send over to Montgomery Police Department about guns. I can tell you about the businesses that I just got to talking to about a week ago that said that one business has about sixty stores, you can probably guess who. They had sixty guns come toward their business in one day. They turned around those sixty because they were not authorized to carry a gun on their property, but majority were juveniles. I can tell you about the businesses that I talked to at gas stations where people just go in and they have guns on their side or they have guns just poking out of their shirts. And they're having a hard time getting employees to work for them. I can go on and on and I think, uh, the people, two people that were before me just pretty much said it all. Uh, I'm telling you from crime stopper's point of view because your citizens are the ones that are calling us. They're saying that something needs to be done. Whether this is the right thing or not, something needs to be done for us to get the safety back, for us to perception of safety at least. To say that, hey, the city is doing something. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitch?
Before, um, Mr. Garrett, um, step down, Tony, can you, I just, I know it's off, off subject, but I want Tony to kind of explain, you know, so many people was mad at the city, was mad at the, the parents when it comes to missing and runaway, um, individuals, especially when it comes to juvenile. Tony, can you explain to the public what's the difference between a runaway and a person that's missing and in danger? And talk about trafficking here in the southern states of Alabama, Georgia, Mississippi. So, I want people to understand, you know, people like, when the animal alert didn't go out, please understand what runaway is and a missing and exploited child. Can you please let the public know?
First of all, with missing person, a missing person is just that, a person is gone and you don't have a clue of where they are. Uh, they just snapped up and most of the time, a missing person means we're thinking that someone has snatched them up or some type of harm is going to come to that person immediately. So that's why you see the police department, they put out a police report right away on missing persons. But when it comes to a runaway, that's a totally different thing because they ran away on their own. So, this is all, all over the nation. There's not a lot of, a lot that the police can do when it comes to runaways because they ran away on their own, so they're not going to put a lot of effort into looking for someone that don't want to be found. That's including juveniles. Now, we do have a lot of people in the city and statewide that's going, uh, through a lot. But there are a lot of people that are grooming females at a young age. And what I mean by grooming, they are testing the water for us, they're giving them drugs, giving them money, giving them whatever they want just to keep them happy until they get to a point where they cannot embarrass them so, or humiliate them so bad that they get them to even go to a step further. What I mean by humiliate, uh, there was a female, that was not too long ago, uh, they made her, these men, or, and females, they made the female, or didn't made her, they coer, uh, coerced her to take photos of herself, uh, naked and send over the internet to just individuals. Um, she's thinking that she's in a hustling mode. And there's men that's doing this to boys, younger, young adults, uh, that's doing this to. And when they get to the point where they think they are hustling, they always go to the next level or these criminals or these con men trick them and go on to the next level. And that becomes sexual, um, not sexual assault, but, um, And that becomes sexual, um, not sexual assault, but, um, what's the word I'm looking for? The sexual trafficking, thank you. Human trafficking, that's come to form as human trafficking. Uh, where, uh, even our elderly people being tricked into it too, they tell these elderly people that I need you to get five hotel rooms, downtown Montgomery, East Chase, wherever. Five hotel rooms, that's all I need. I'm gonna double your money. And what they're doing, they're pretty much leading to the cause. These elderly people don't know that they're giving human traffickers rooms in order to do online prostitution. Uh, these young juveniles, when you're a runaway and you even come back to the, um, come back to the parents, most of the time, they're there to rest up and then go away. Ask me how many programs that actually take in a juvenile that's now is, has been sexually assaulted, that's addicted to drugs and have mental illness.
How many?
None. I know because I called every last one that has a commercial that has things up. The trick is you have to be willing to go. If you're still in the belief as a young teenager that you're in a hustling mode, you're not gonna be willing to go into any type of treatment. The last person that we had that went into treatment, the judge ordered, actually ordered them to go into treatment. Uh, what we're gonna do, I think, uh, Mitchell and John say we're gonna have a meeting soon to talk about what we can do on a ground level as try to help some of these parents that have their kids that are being possibly targeted uh, for these human traffickers, traffickers. Right now, we do have a grant, an opioid grant that's, um, we're waiting to see if it get approved. Where we have a, um, a shelter that's willing to take in juveniles, that's, that will take in a juvenile that's a runaway, that is addicted, that is, uh, that has been physically abused and that has mental illness. They're gonna keep them for five days and be evaluated. And then we'll have released information to show the parents that this is what your child is going through and maybe convince that child that, no, you're not hustling. You're being hustled. And hopefully, we can get that person some help before you see them on the side of the road in their, in their late twenties or mid twenties. And they're so strung out that they're not profitable anymore, so they put them on Carmichael Road. They put them on West Boulevard. Did I ask you questions, sir?
Yeah, yes, sir. And, and counsel, that's what I want y'all to understand that when those legislators go into session, some of the things that we need to address, and I work with, uh, Mr. Garrett all the time, some of the things that we need to address is what he's talking about. So we gotta make sure that our legislators are doing everything possible because like I said, those juveniles are being exploited he- here in the city of Montgomery. Thank you, Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, Ms. Prud.
Real quick, Mr. President, Aranda, you said it, we need to work with the legislatures. The, this law came from the legislatures about the no permit. We wrote something that is in direct violation of state law. Stacy, am I correct? We are not enforcing this law. Ms. Exford, you said a minute ago enforcement is the biggest thing. What we have on paper ain't worth what it's written on. We have corrections that I'm gonna pass out to the council this week that we think we can hold up in court and make this law work for the city of Montgomery and police department. So I'll pass those out to you guys, uh, this week. So nine and ten, nine and ten, Ms. Blalock, can carry over one more time. What you laughing at? You carried something over a minute ago, Aranda.
I'm gonna put a limitation on you, carry over.
And I'll get counsel, I'll get the, you guys these changes, and you can take a look at it.
Thank you, Ms. Prud. And I want to say, I mean, I think we, we listened to it, and I think we did this from a council standpoint, listening to our citizens talk about we needed to do something gun violence. So we did something, we were acting to it, we supported unanimously. And so we're moving forward to work through based on what our legal people are saying that we can do to, to enforce it. We hear you. We're trying to react from a standpoint, from a city council, and protect our city and our citizens. So that's what this council did when we passed this. Thank you.
Item eleven.
Item eleven, application for towing company doing business as Clutch Roadside Auto with no physical location.
Ms. Beard.
Is the owner here?
Owners for Clutch Towing, Roadside Auto. Ms. Beard.
Wish to go over it over one more time.
And you think he gonna ever?
I don't know.
I mean, we can just vote it up and down, and you don't have to worry about it.
Is, is he not showing up at all?
He's not showing up.
Vote it down.
Vote it down. That's what we do most of the time. He doesn't come.
Okay, we're gonna vote this.
Think of most of them, deny.
Charlie.
They have a motion on the floor to deny. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is denied.
He'll come next.
Well, he's way too late.
Now he's out there operating without a business license.
Right, so.
Item twelve, well, he's already operating.
Yeah.
But he does not park the tow truck in his house.
All right, item twelve, item twelve, item twelve.
Resolution repearing the legislation which created Montgomery City County Personnel Board expressing council's intent to adopt an ordinance creating a city personnel board in accordance with Act twenty twenty-four dash three three seven.
All right, Mr. Semen.
I mean, I made my, uh, comments on this in, uh, the regular session. I mean, in the work session on what I think we need to do with this. Uh, this council passed a ordinance to establish a human resource department with the city of Montgomery, and it has not been established. I think some questions that came up in our last, uh, council as a whole is about, you know, we don't have the human resource, uh, department, and we talked about getting rid of the personnel. How would it work hand in hand? So my suggestion was, my recommendation was that we just carry this over indefinitely until that H. R. department's come, and then this ordinance will expire. Will expire at the end of the year, and then it will have to be new before we move on. Yeah.
Good.
All right. So we're gonna carry this over indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Carry it over indefinitely?
Yes, ma'am.
Or table it?
Table it definitely, my bad. Put it on the table.
Item thirteen, ordinance modifying the district plan of the city of Montgomery Tourism Improvement District.
Any motion to suspend the rules?
No, no. Moved to adopt.
Motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Item fourteen, ordinance amending code of ordinance to section six dash two zero eight, collections of undue charges regarding the Montgomery Tourism Improvement District.
Move, move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted. Fifteen, resolution extended the moratorium on automated car washes for an additional six months.
You wanted to amend that, Mr. Grant?
Yeah, I'd like to carry it over another sixty days, and we're, we're gonna come up with something that we could do, uh, in that I'll get something, some ordinance that I suggest that we do within a, some limit between car washes. Not, not by the, as the crow flies, but by roads. So we can't have four just topping in a quarter mile or half mile.
If you carry this over, the moratorium is lifted and they can make applications.
So you wanna do the mileage, within a certain mile, so many feet?
Just wanted you to be careful.
Well, can, can we, all right, tell me how we can carry it over for sixty days, moratorium.
Adopt first. No. You can adopt, um, adopt it and then amend it. Make a motion to adopt, then a motion to amend to change it from six months to sixty days.
Okay, I'd like to make an emotion to adopt.
Now you got a motion to adopt, then amend?
Yes. Amend to, for an additional sixty days?
Correct.
Sixty days.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
All in favor of the amendment?
Of the amendment, please raise your hand.
Mr. Calhoun, unanimous?
Now voting on the main motion, all in favor to adopt, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted as amended.
Ms. Blalock, I made a mistake. I need to go back to item.
Thank you, Ms. Blalock.
And I know we carried it over, but I had two people to speak with the council on that.
Item twelve?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Kevin King and Mr. Kendall Anderson.
I see Kelvin King, item number twelve. Kelvin, I'm sorry.
We have two of them in here, right? What have we done?
It's Kelvin, Daniel.
All right, come on, come on.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing this evening?
Good.
Um, I think the mayor's office had reached out to me to kind of give an explanation of how we got where we were, where we are. Um, we, in anticipation, I, I think you all know this.
Kendall Anderson. Name, Kendall Anderson.
It's what?
Kendall Anderson.
Thank you.
Um, when this kind of all started, I guess a couple of years ago, two, three years ago, um, in July of twenty-two, Personnel Director Douglas sent an email recommending that each the city and the county hire an H. R. director. Uh, in response to that suggestion, the county staff started the process of reviewing what we would need, um, in a human resources director and necessary support for that position. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, um, we contracted with Auburn University's Government and Economic Development Institute for an H. R. department personnel analysis. This analysis proved the base structure of what a H. R. department would look like for staffing to include job descriptions. Um, this study also pointed out H. R. processes and functions that were not being done by the personnel department. With this study, it became clear that a human resources department specifically for Montgomery County would be a better alternative and serve the needs of the various county departments, offering a one-stop shop department for guidance with employee hiring and other personnel processes. Once the bill to split city county personnel became a real thing, the Montgomery County Commission decided to full steam ahead, pursue its own human resource department after taking an inventory of uniform H. R. related activities that in some departments were not occurring on a regular basis. In twenty twenty-four, the county contracted with H. R. M., excuse me, Human Resource Management Incorporated, to provide an assessment of H. R. activities that started, that was done in May of twenty twenty-four. And in August of twenty twenty-four, uh, we have a full contract with them to assist the county with the transition from the city county personnel to a county-specific human resource department. We have also separately contracted with Job Apps to keep the same job application system in place. And thanks to Director Douglas, the county-specific data will be transferred, and it is anticipated that the Montgomery County Human Resources Job Apps will be ready to go, ready to go live the week of December the ninth through the thirteenth. The commission fully understands that we will be paying more than the twenty percent, which equals out to be about two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars on this new system. But if we do also understand that it is a part of Montgomery County's growth and redevelopment. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Anderson? So you guys are moving forward, you're not with the personnel department anymore? So you, that's what you're saying, you're moving forward?
Correct. And today, we adopted our, we, you know, they adopted the rules. Uh, so yes, sir, we've taken steps to make sure that we are, uh, no longer part of the personnel system.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Mr. King.
Good evening. So some of the benefits to replacing the city county personnel board and establishing the city H. R. department. Uh, number one, localizing the resource governance. Now, replacing the city county personnel board with the city H. R. department allows the city of Montgomery to have full control over his H. R. policies and, and operations. This change ensures H. R. practices are aligned specifically with the city's priorities and workforce needs. It streamlined decision-making would be the second bullet point. A dedicated city H. R. department removes the complexities of a shared personnel board, creating a more efficient structure for hiring, uh, employee development and policy enforcement. This streamlined approach reduces delays and increases responsiveness to employee and organizational needs. Modernized H. R. practices. Establishing the city H. R. department provides the flexibility to implement modern H. R. solutions such as advanced recruiting tools, employment engagement programs, a digital workplace management systems, and the city gains the ability to stay competitive in attracting and retaining top talent. Increased accountability and oversight. The city H. R. department ensures direct oversight and accountability for personnel decisions, eliminating the shared gov, the shared governance challenges of the current personnel board structure. This fosters greater fairness and consistency, uh, in how policies are applied and how po, and how employee concerns are addressed. And cost efficiency and resource optimization. A consolidated H. R. operations under a single city entity eliminates redundancies and improves allocation of, the allocation of resources. This results, uh, in better financial management and more efficient use of taxpayer funds. Enhanced employee support and advocacy, uh, employees, employee benefit, employees benefit from having a dedicated H. R. team focused on their needs, including career development, dispute resolution and workplace satisfaction. A city H. R. department can better advocate for and support employees with a unique context of municipal work. Establishing the city H. R. department aligns with the Legislative Intention of Act two zero two four dash three three seven, enabling the city to operate within a framework designated to serve its workforce more effectively. A repeal in the city county personnel board is a necessary step in the transition of, uh, in the, in the transition to improve.
Go ahead and wrap it up for Mr. King.
Thank you. A repeal in the city county personnel board is a necessary step to transition to this improved structure and a focus on strategic workplace development. A city H. R. department enables strategic planning for workplace development, addresses issues such as succession planning, diversity and inclusion, and employee training.
All right, thank you. Any question, Mr. King? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And I think, uh, Mr. Reed, Mr. King and all others, I think what the, the city council passed in their last budget cycle uh, and authorized through the oral chart, a human resource department. So that, with this, this ordinance does not affect what we have asked you guys to go ahead and do in the oral chart. So we want you guys to go ahead and move forward with that. My only question is saying, once we get that established, it's why I wanted to table this indefinitely. Uh, so we won't have a duplication of work. So once we get established and we move forward, I think what our personnel department will be at that point is just an appeal process for, for, uh, employees in the city of Montgomery. So, you know, that was the, the reasoning for table and asking you to move forward. So I wish you guys well to send that department up as we move forward. Thank you.
And we're charging ahead, and, and thank you all for the support on this. Thank you.
Item sixteen, application for a towing company doing business as Montgomery Repo and Towing, six twenty-one Air Base Boulevard.
Uh, Ms. uh, Rob. Owners for the towing company on Montgomery Repo and Towing, in the audience, please come forward. Ms. Rob.
Mr. President, can we carry it over?
They ain't coming, like, won't carry it over.
You wanna vote it up now?
Me, yeah, that's on you.
All right, well, we go ahead and vote it up and down.
All right, need a motion to deny?
Motion to deny.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Nice. All right.
Item number seventeen, review of Precise Billiards, five forty-six East Patton Avenue.
All right, Mr. Mr. Semen.
I assume there's no representatives from the business here.
Someone's coming now, you guys.
Oh, there are. Oh, okay.
All right, your name, is this Keeta Smith, Shaquilla?
Yes, Shaquilla Smith.
Shaquilla Smith, and do we have Danielle Holmes? Okay, all right. Yes, ma'am.
All right, so are you, is your business Precise Billiards or is it the Clubhouse?
Precise Billiards.
And it's in five forty-six East Patton?
Yes.
And you have a business license?
No, that's what we here for today, for the business license.
See, this is, again, th- this is the confusion that this creates, right? They're here for a business license and five forty-six, five forty-six East Patton, you're in the Normandale Shopping Center?
Right.
Okay, and you're not open right now?